Thursday, May 22nd, 2013. Meeting of the Zone, Corrine Township Zoning Committee meeting will come to order. Could we please stand for Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, I would like to ask everybody to silence their supplements, please. Can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Chakovsky?
Here.
Mr. Westfall?
Here. Mr. Grody, could you please come up? Okay, now we'll finish the tariffs. Housekeeping. The Corrine Township Zoning Committee, zoning commission meets on the third Wednesday of each month at 7:00 PM in the Corrine Township Custis Chamber, 220 Springdale Road, Corrine Township, Ohio. The procedures are specified in Section 3, 2.2, goals and powers of the Corrine Township Resolution. We hear zoning changes, requests, and, I'm sorry, we hear zoning change requests recommending either approval or non-approval before we're going to the trustees for this legislative body for the township. This process is governed by the Ohio devised code. When we get down into the, when we get down into the, when we start doing these things, I will explain how those work. First thing on the agenda is, second thing on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of March 18th, 2014 meeting. Is there any changes or corrections? I have one. Down at the bottom, it says next meeting April 15th. The next, what when the next meeting is? Is there any other changes or corrections or additions? None appearing, the chair would accept, entertain a motion for to accept the minutes of the April, or the March 18th? Twenty, no, that'd be the April, we didn't meet in April.
Right.
March 18th.
Yep.
Okay, 2014 meeting.
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes of the Senate with change.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those. Motion carried. Next on the agenda is public address. This is where anybody here who does not have an item listed on the agenda, but would like to address the commission, or instead of reporting them, and does that, is there any person in here that would like to do that? None appearing. We'll go to item four. Final development plan. We're going to change this a little bit, we're going to do B first, and then we're going to do A. So, the first one we're going to hear is case number 92.3, Applebee's Northgate Mall, minor amendment to final development plan for wall signage. Does staff have a presentation?
Yes, and I can be very brief with you. Applebee's is considering investing in their property and changing the wall signage on the property. The current wall signage is governed by the final development plan from 1993, the dimensions of which are copied but illegible. And, you know, there is, there is a change in the, in the height, a change in the square footage, and for that reason, they, they need to, they need to come back and ask for a minor modification to their final development plan, because it's in a planned district at the mall. So, it's a very simple request, it's, it's attractive, the, the wall signage that's proposed is very attractive, and, and I recommend approval.
Is there anybody here from Applebee's that would like to make? Any further presentation?
Also, if you notice Jeff, we're doing the new, I'm Brent with Integrated Sign in Lexington, Kentucky. One thing we're doing too, we're actually changing the canopy over the door.
Could you identify yourself in your?
My name is Brent Fathergill, I'm with Integrated Signographic in Lexington, Kentucky.
Thank you. That's what we get it right in a minute.
Thank you. But also, we're changing the awning over the front door that shows the yellow panels too compared to what's existing, that's the only other change.
Correct.
Okay. Does, does anybody have any questions for him? Ms. Smith?
So, you're changing it, what?
Right now, they have a canvas awning over the front door, and it's coming down, and we're going up with the panels with apple over the front door. I do have a picture if you'd like to see what's there existing now.
Is it my big one that we have? Yeah. This one?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Follow me.
Mr. Teming?
No questions, thanks.
Mr. Grody?
No questions.
Okay, thank you. Is there any discussion among the members of the board concerning this modification?
An upgrade is always great.
I like it, I really do. The chair would entertain a motion that we accept case number 92.3, Applebee's, Applebee's Northgate Mall, minor amendment to final development plan.
I will make a motion to accept the final development plan, pose modification, a minor amendment to final development plan as proposed under case number nine.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We move in a second that we approve case number 92.3, Applebee's Northgate Mall, minor amendment to final development plan. Do we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Teming?
Yes.
Mr. Westfall?
Aye.
Mr. Grody?
Yes.
Motion carried. You're on. Next, the next item on the agenda is case number ZA 2001-04 for Evergreen. We'll have just a minute. Does staff have a presentation for this?
Yes, sir. Okay, so this is a, this is an unconventional case, I think. The, the background on, on this case is the project area, which is the corner of East Miami River Road and Harrison Avenue, received a preliminary development plan back in February of 2011. The original final development plan was originally approved in March of 2011, at the next meeting. The zoning commission of FDP only lasts for a year without an extension, and only, it expires after a year. So, the zoning commission extended the FDP approval for an additional year, and that extension went through March 19th of 2013. The applicant reapplied for, for a final development plan this past March, before the preliminary development plan expired. So, so what we have here is, we've got a preliminary development plan with an expired FDP, and the applicant is asking you to reapprove the final development plan. So, just to walk you through the, the site, this is Harrison Avenue going east to west, this is East Miami River Road going north to south, this is the old Decker subdivision that sits up here. Their current operation, Forever Green Landscaping's current operation sits right here. What they were, what we're talking about this evening is the area in this polygon here. The applicant, currently, the district is zoned land development business. So, the applicant proposes a single-story office retail building on the site with 20 aggregate bins to be filled, my understanding is, with landscaping material, as in mulch and, and rock. There's a very nice land, streetscape treatment along the, along the Harrison Avenue side of the property, which you'll see on that, the section of the, of the fence includes a brick pylon and, and aluminum fence material, which is very attractive, and it also includes a pretty hefty amount of landscaping along the streetscape, as you would expect from a, from a landscaping company. So, the building elevations show the single-story office retail building with the signage. So, as I, as I reviewed this FDP, the applicant proposes 15 spaces for 36 square, 3,600 square feet of office and retail use, that meets the parking, the zoning requirements for parking. The applicant proposes wall signage that is consistent with the sign rules for, for a B2 district. The landscaping plan that the applicant proposes meets the zoning requirements. The lighting plan shows that the, that's actually average illumination on the site is, is 7.4 foot candles, where the maximum permitted is 2.0 foot candles. Looking at other considerations, sidewalks are not included in the plan, and are required to be installed on all public streets in Corrine, have been since 1993. However, in, in March of 2006, the trustees implemented a payment in lieu of sidewalks program. No sidewalks are proposed on this site, so the applicant would be required to, to engage with the, with the payment in lieu of sidewalks program. There's, there's an interesting issue with the proposed use and the architectural design of the building. The proposed use of the building is retail and office, but the architecture shows a building with large bays that are not typically found on retail and office buildings. So, it, that throws up some red flags about the intended use. I, we can get to that in a minute. Impervious surface ratio on the property, the site has an ISR of 74.7, where the maximum impervious surface ratio in the B2 and B3 districts is, is 75, so that, that's good. There's also a common open space requirement in the zoning resolution, which requires 15% of a planned business development to be designated as common open space, and it requires that common open space to be defined on a site plan, and, and in fact, recorded with a public easement. So, that, that wasn't shown on the, on the final development plan. That having been said, you know, we've seen this case before, and we've, there have been public hearings, so I do recommend approval of the final development plan, but with the following conditions, that outdoor storage areas be limited to nursery and landscaping materials. That would exclude, well, then the next condition would be that no vehicles shall be stored on the, on the outside of the property, except three single axle vehicles used in the delivery of goods sold or used by the landscaping business, that may be parked in the rear of the site along the northern property line in tandem, and the location of these parking spaces shall be shown on the final development plan, and in fact, they are. So, those are located in the northeast part, you can see those. So, other than that, no vehicles or equipment would be stored outside, and those vehicles would just be single axle vehicle. The third condition would be that the maximum sign height for the pylon sign would be 10 feet, and the maximum area would be 150 square feet. The fourth condition would be that 15% of the site shall be dedicated as open space with an easement per the zoning resolution. The fifth condition would be that a four-foot sidewalk be installed, or the applicant pay into the payment in lieu of sidewalks fund. The sixth condition would be that vehicles and equipment shall not be stored in the retail slash office building, and that gets back to what is the purpose of the large bay doors? You know, retail and office generally don't need those, those types of doors. The seventh condition would be that the plan shall in all other ways comply with the zoning resolution, and I support a variance for the outdoor lighting to be in excess of the two foot candles. And that's it.
Does the applicant have a presentation they would like to make? Would you please identify yourself and address?
Tony Stevenson, Forever Green Landscape, 7582 Harrison Avenue. Presentation is, this is it. The storage of the equipment and stuff was in the original FDP, the final development plan, because we were going to store in part of this building, that we were still wearing like the bobcat and the stuff, the, for all of the material. It's in, it is inside that building. That's my presentation. Everything else is like it was before. We are new at this, and obviously, we're figuring this out, and we're working, it seems like every time we make a move that we get two steps backwards. We thought that we had one year from the time that we got the zoning, I don't know what you call the dumb thing, when you come up after the FDP has been approved, and you get your permit, we thought we had one year from that. We actually put the down payment on the building, and then the building, the builder came up and pulled the building permit, or not building permit, but he pulled the zoning permit, and we thought we had one year from that, and I guess that was not the case, and that's why we're hearing it again today.
Okay. Ms. Smith, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Are you willing to play a sidewalk, if you want a condition?
If that's one of the conditions, we're either for the sidewalks in, or we're doing it. The sidewalks don't lead to anywhere, is the, was the reason why we asked for them not to be there. There's no place for the sidewalk to even go, and that's something that the engineer will have to work out. If we can put them in, we're putting them in. You know, it just, I'm not so sure that it's even feasible to put them in, because if you can scroll back to where it is now, do you have, you used to have a picture from a, from the ground level on Harrison Avenue? You not have that picture anymore? If you're on Harrison Avenue right there, that whole thing is a hillside. From the, from the actual road, you go in, it's a, it's a hillside going straight up. So, there really is no place to put a sidewalk there.
But, but are you willing to pay a lot of the sidewalk?
Yeah, if we don't put it in, we're paying, we're doing whatever you, whatever you make us do.
Blessed, yes.
Yes. Whatever you're gonna make us, I'm learning.
Ms. Smith, is that all?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Teming?
I remember this site because it's been before us on, this is probably the third occasion, maybe the fourth. I remember that, you know, we had issues with respect to, you know, cutting into the hill, and the hill maintaining its integrity with the homes built on top, there was going to be a retaining wall in the back, and I think one of the other plans we looked at had a couple of buildings, one for retail and another separate building for storage of vehicles. Did I get all that right?
Yeah, that's the, that's the whole 26 acres, we're only talking about two, three, two and a half.
Let me go on. Wait a minute. Okay, so, is what we have here tonight something that we've previously approved?
Yes, it's, it's close. I don't think that they had the, the building elevations.
What are the precise differences between what we approved in the past and what they're asking us to approve tonight?
I don't recall seeing the lighting plan, I don't recall seeing the building elevations in the, in the previous.
Okay.
The only thing that I saw that's different-
Wait, 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 wait. Is this a project that you guys are ready to dig into right away?
We already have the down payment on the building down.
I'm not worried about that.
And it depends-
My question is, my question is, are you ready to dig into this?
It depends on you.
Okay.
We have another development plan on which that you guys are making us come, where we are currently working on, which I thought we were going to be doing tonight, but I guess, like I said, if I'm learning still, we are not, so I will see you again next month. And depending on what you tell me to do with that one, will depend on the timeframe of this one.
So, you have a different plan that you want to present?
Mr. Teming, I stand corrected, I, I just pulled out the, and I just pulled out the old drawing, and it is the same, it's the same elevation. So, it did have those big doors back in 2010, 2011, when it was initially approved.
Right, I'm recalling the discussion at that time, and I think one of the, one part of the discussion was no outdoor storage of vehicles, period. And I, I remember the storage bins for the ball landscaping, but, but I also recall those being back on what I guess is the north side of the property, and not out in the middle of the parking lot. So, I don't have any problem, you know, doing something with this plan tonight, my colleagues feel it's okay, but I do know that, my sense is that if they're back, because their previous certificate has expired, then why don't we just see what we approved a year and a half or two years ago, and approve that? And then, if there's some modification, if they don't want that plan anymore, that's okay with me too, but I'd like to know what the difference. We've discussed this site several times in the past, and given it plenty of lip service, so, that's what I'm-
Yeah.
That's my issue.
And I didn't give you the full, the full background, because the full background is, is really complex, but I can run, run through the full background. There have been many iterations of, of this site plan.
Let me just say, let me just say this, I'm talking about with respect to this applicant, because I know this-
Right.
-corner's gone through a lot of aberrations.
Yep.
Okay, I'm not worried about what was going to go there in terms of UDF, or the LaRoses, or all that stuff.
Right.
Not interested in it, just with this applicant.
Yep, so this is, you know, functionally, the same plan. It's the same plan that was, that was approved back, with, with the same conditions, but for I, I added three conditions to the previously approved conditions. I added that the, because they're a part of our zoning resolution. 15% of the site shall be dedicated with open space, the four-foot sidewalk, and the vehicles and equipment should not be stored in the retail office building, only because it was a big red flag. I wasn't privy to, you know, the conversation back in 2011, but it was a big red flag to me that there's an office building with a bay on it, and I, I didn't know what, it's, whatever your pleasure is, basically. I mean, if you're okay with that, that's fine, but it's not a retail office building. It's a multi-use building.
Yes, that's what it was. It's, my understanding is that we were coming with you guys for the exact same FDP as was approved-
Yep.
-before. That was my understanding.
But it sounds like-
The extra conditions is news to me.
It sounds like the integrity of the building is different now.
The what?
Sounds to me like the makeup of the building is different.
So, I wasn't here in 2011, but what I'm looking at is a site plan that says retail office, and a, and a building that says, that, I've never seen a retail office building look like that before, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
And so, it's, you know, it's up to you, if, if the, you know, I think it's preferable to have the vehicles stored inside rather than out.
Well, that's, that's a condition.
It wasn't the vehicles, it's the equipment that load the material.
I don't think we're gonna-
My understanding is that I was coming to with you guys for an FDP that looked exactly like it was when you were, when you approved it before. That's my presentation.
And functionally, it is that way. I mean, there's not, there's no major differences at all.
Except for four, five, and six.
In fact, the building is the same square footage height, the, you know, the layout of those aggregate bins are the same.
All right. I saw other questions.
So, do we get to take out the, I guess it's?
Six.
Six? Because four, five, and six were not in the original one that was approved.
Correct. That's correct.
Well, what, why do you want that out? What's your intention?
Because we store our loaders, our bobcats and stuff, inside. We don't want to leave them outside.
Right.
And that last bay of the, of the building was for that purpose.
Well, this, the equipment shall not, shall not be stored in the retail office building, you know, that's the point. Was the building last time was?
Multi-use property.
Combination retail?
Office.
Yes.
So, that, and that's, and that's fine, that's information that you have that I didn't have. So, take that, you know, use that information to, to make a good decision.
There.
Because the, the board at the time didn't want to see all of our equipment outside, so.
You know, trust me, the board still doesn't want to see our equipment outside. Okay, that's all the questions I got.
Very good.
And Mr. Grody?
Could you tell us, if I'm a customer driving up your proposed facility here, first of all, is the west elevation, is that elevation that faces East Miami River Road?
Yes, that faces East Miami River Road.
Okay, so if I'm driving up to that, and I only see a single door, what am I going to go in there to buy?
The stuff that's stored on the outside, and inside of the retail center are tools. It's tools and fertilizer, that's really basically all that's going to be in there.
That I can buy, or that it's for your use as your company?
Yeah, you can buy. It's open to the public.
It'll be open?
Yeah, it's a, it's going to be similar to a J's mulch with a, here we go, Ohio mulch. It's going to be almost exactly like that.
Okay, well, I'm not familiar with Ohio mulch, but it looks like in your drawings that the inside of the building is just going to be one huge open 60 by 60 facility.
The, there's an, there's an office, and then with the counter, as you, first you walk into that one door, there's an office, there's a, there's a counter right there where you can, that customers come up to, which is, there's an office behind it, and then the last bay is sectioned off with the equipment.
Okay, well, that's not shown on our drawing.
Correct.
Okay, I'm still curious, Mr. Mills, this isn't something totally different than what we talked to this gentleman about some months ago?
Yeah, okay, so there's two, he, this applicant has two applications that are moving through the pipeline right now. One is for, and I can show, one is for the, what we're talking about tonight is for the yellow box.
Right.
Okay, in the future, we're going to be talking about this, these parcels over here to the east, and that's, and that's a separate, separate application, and a whole separate deal. It's the same business, but it's in two different stages of the zoning approval process.
These two cannot be linked together in any way, shape, or form, that one's contingent upon the other, or vice versa?
I suppose we could be as creative as we want with the conditions.
As our concern, if I remember last time on the parcel-
To the east.
I didn't consider the east parcel, let's put it that way.
Yep.
Was that it's been out of compliance for so long, that we wanted to get that cleaned up.
Yes.
But it doesn't seem like we've got any movement on that.
There is an application that we received, and it's where, its next stop is Hamilton County Regional Planning Commission in June 5th, and then it comes to you guys in, in June 17th, or June 18th, whatever the next meeting is.
But it definitely is moving through the process.
It is. It's just a month behind, because it has to go to regional planning.
No further questions.
Mr. Teming? Is there current location of existing non-complaining?
That's a good question. A savvy lawyer may try to argue that. It's, it's such a complicated scenario, because at first, it was Decker's office, and then a landscaping company got the preliminary development plan approved, but then went bankrupt, and never filed a final development plan. So, the building is, has been there, but its use, yeah, right.
Is there a reason why, if they're going to come back with, if they're coming in with another application on the other parcels for the, there a reason why we can't just hear all this?
Historical precedent, that's all. It was separated into two different cases in the beginning, and, and they're in two different hoppers, two different stages in the process. We could, we could absolutely tie this all together.
I mean, would you, would you guys have any problems with doing that? And I, I want to tell you why.
Yes, our lawyer, our lawyer told us to make sure they keep them separate.
Let me, let me finish, then you can, and the reason is, I think you might get more mileage out of the whole development if you bring them together. We approved this one, and we don't like some things of the second one that come in, don't blend with the first one, it might go down on the second one, and maybe that's okay with you, I don't know. But it just seems to me, but I, I mean, I can't ask you for all your applications, it seems to me that, since the parcels are so close together, and I'm assuming that you're going to run the same business off of both parcels.
No, it's two different buildings, two different, two different, completely different businesses.
Okay, what's the business that you're going to run in, in your existing, currently located?
That's the landscape company.
Okay, that's the landscape company?
That's the landscape company.
And what's this going to be?
That's the retail sales, that's where we're selling the stuff.
Of what?
Of mulch.
Of the landscape company?
Yeah, of all the stuff that landscape company uses.
Okay, I get it. All right, all the questions I got.
Yes, I got one more question. What did you say that we stored outside?
Outside of this parcel here, we have three trucks that we deliver materials to customers with.
Single axle.
Okay, because I think previously, my members of the department, that was probably also probably what would be stored outside, and in the site and stuff, how it would look.
The, the last committee told us to make sure that we put them in the back behind it, and put it, put it back behind, but they said, they all said they were okay with it.
Okay, so you said trucks for delivery?
Yes.
Are going to be permanently there? I mean, you want it every day?
Yes.
Yes, that is going to be every day, or?
Yes, it's going to be there every day. They deliver, they deliver mulch, topsoil- They deliver, they deliver mulch, topsoil, rock, gravel, every day. They'll be going in and out.
But it's not something that would be parked there, is that correct?
When it's not used, it'd be parked there.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Maybe it's things going on, figuring out, because in the paint-
Good luck with that.
It seems like that is a problem in the paint.
Right.
Hey?
There's, I think there's going to be, there's going to be three spaces on the top, right up here, that are, that are lined up, and it's not shown on here, maybe that's what was confusing about this. There's three spaces right here, and there's only, and they would be permitted to have only three single-axle vehicles sitting up here for parking, and that would be the only outdoor parking on the site aside from customers.
Okay, for now, thank you. And you say you're going to sell mulch?
Yes. The bins are for the mulch, for rock, gravel, topsoil, all that, all that kind of stuff. And then the inside is for tools. One of the bays is to put the equipment where, so it's not, not outside.
And what are the other bays for?
Just to be able to bring in the stuff, pack up the truck and-
Got it.
Have you ever been to John Deere, let's go?
They do?
You ever been to John Deere, let's go?
I don't.
Any of the committee? They have the big doors, so they literally, they just bring the trucks right up to the door and unload everything.
Like a dock.
Okay.
Okay. The dimensions on this, does this run up to where that berm is?
No, this is not. Doesn't get up that far.
Okay.
Not, not there yet.
The berm that you're hiding your stuff behind?
Actually, we leveled that so people can see us more.
Okay.
That's actually part, next month, year C, where we have that on the-
Okay, now, how big a parcel is what we're, we're bringing in next? Is that just the area where all those stacked-up blocks are and-
Yeah, so that's-
... ballistic nylon over on it?
Exactly. So that's-
Are we going to put real buildings in there?
That's what we're going to, that's what we're going to be talking about.
The next parcel, which hopefully is next month, I thought it was today, comes all the way over to here. She shoots all the way over here, from here.
Okay, it's that parcel there?
Yeah, it's this.
Okay.
Hey, I was pretty close, wasn't I?
Yeah, I was. Do you own all that other property, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And we have a cemetery on the other side.
Okay.
Just saying, I don't think they mind.
I don't have any problem with this. There ain't discussion among the people on the commission about this?
Mr. Mills, could you, there you go, I was going to ask you to put those conditions back up. Sir, is number six going to be a problem for you? Condition number six?
With number six, condition number six, where not being able to put the equipment on the, on the inside of that building, then they would be stored on the outside, which is one of the reasons, that's one of the things that the zoning committee did not want to see. That's why we put it on the inside of the store.
And to be honest, I would rather have them inside than outside. And like I said, I just wasn't privy to those conversations back in 2011.
So are you amending your recommendation, Mr. Mills?
Yeah, I would rather see that, that equipment inside, yes.
So number six is?
Yeah, we can recommend, recommend getting rid of number six. And so then, the only vehicles that would be parked outside would be three single-axle vehicles on the north side of the property.
Single-axle vehicles, automobiles?
Yeah, or delivery trucks that don't have that second, you know, the second wheel in the back. It just limits the tonnage.
Not doing it. Pick-up truck.
Yeah.
Dump trucks.
Is there any other discussion? I would entertain a motion that we approve case Z8 2001-04 for Forever Green for a final development plan amendment.
Case number Z8 2001-04 for Evergreen on their final development plan application, I recommend, I'll make a motion that we approve the plan as presented with the following conditions. One, outdoor storage areas are limited to nursery and/or landscaping materials. No vehicles shall be stored outside except that three single-axle vehicles used in delivery for goods sold or used by the landscaping business may be parked in the rear of the site along the northeast property line, emphasis rear on the northeast property line, in tandem, and the location of these parking spaces shall be shown on the final development plan.
We've got that.
Three, the maximum cyanide shall be 10 feet and no more than 150 square feet. 15% of the site shall be dedicated to open space with an easement per the zoning resolution. Five, if the applicant will pay the appropriate amount into the sidewalk fund in lieu of installing sidewalks along a perimeter of the property, and that's my motion.
And then-
There's a seventh one in there.
And a variance. There, I'm sorry, it dripped onto the-
Oh, I'm sorry, plan shall in all other ways comply with the zoning resolution.
Okay, yeah, sure, yep.
Outdoor lighting shall be permitted to be in excess of 2.0-foot candles as shown on the photometric plan.
Do we have a second?
Second.
They moved a second edit that we accept, case Z8 2001-04 for Evergreen, final development plan minor amendment. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Teming?
Yes.
Mr. Grody?
Yes.
Mr. Westphal?
All right, motion carried.
See you guys next month, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is public carry, we have none. Next on the agenda is informal concept review, we have none. The next item would be old business, do we have any old business?
Old business.
Next would be new business, do we have any new business?
No new business.
Next would be administration, do we have any announcements or, what are we going to do, some training?
No announcements. There was just a BZA training, zoning commission training. I'll look into that.
Okay, thank you. Any announcements?
Nope.
The next meeting will be June 17th, 2014. There's no other business to come before the commission. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So the second?
They moved a second, and we adjourn this meeting. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Third?
The intro.